I know.
All right. Everybody want to start, we can start.
What everybody say their name?
Yeah, let's start off with names. This is where we just go from left to right.
Okay, I'm Philip Paduto. One time I used to be a mayor.
Teresa Cale Smith, President of Pittsburgh City Council.
I'm John Chapman, City of Pittsburgh's Special Events Office.
So we got all these beautiful people here today to discuss our beginning of the Stop the Violence Pittsburgh events and programs that we had in the city. Without these people here, we would not have been able to do our events. And I remember that I sent former mayor, mayor to us, Paduto, an email in 2012, asking him to participate in our, and I think he read it just like that, asking him to participate in our first Stop the Violence event over at Stage Eight E. And he responded back to me, said, hey, I'll let him tell you what he said.
I would be honored to participate. My office will respond tomorrow to get more info. Thank you for asking and for putting this together.
So what were your thoughts when you first got that email? Addressing some of the violence within the city?
Yeah, no, it, the email itself addressed the grassroots effort to create and have this organization put together an empowerment dance and event to get people involved in being able to recognize that, you know, solutions can come from the ground up. That it's not, the solutions aren't going to be found at City Hall. That if we are going to find the solutions, it's going to happen from people. And it has to happen in a grassroots. It's like building a building, you don't build the roof first, you build the foundation.
Exactly. And at this time, we want to mention that you were a city councilor.
I was a city councilman, yeah.
Yeah, we're not the mayor at that time. And then the second person I contacted was Teresa Cale Smith, and I think she invited me down to her office. And we had a discussion about her support and how she could do things to help us in the community. And she gave me a history on her legacy in the Lower Hill District and her mother having a bar and all the other stuff. And she worked in the community, her family. So go ahead, tell me what happened.
So I remember that we had a meeting. You reached out to me, you actually sent me the same email, I didn't realize, you told me that tonight. I didn't respond, but I did respond to the phone calls and request for a meeting. And that's how we, we started talking. And I have to say, you said if it weren't for all of us, that Juneteenth wouldn't be where it is today. But I can say, I'm pretty sure with your tenacity, we would still have Juneteenth and it'd be a celebration. But I would've been, I think we all would've been sad that we were not part of it. So thank you for allowing us to be part of that.
Most definitely. So the first event that we had was at Stage Eight E, and I think you guys issued a proclamation.
I am.
And I think you had the proclamation, where is it at?
It's right here.
No, this one right here.
Yes.
Well, what we did for the first event is we recognized a number of community organizations that participate and curb and balance throughout the years, all in their various communities on the Hill District, the North Side, South Side, people that have been working for a number of years. And that's one of your ideas that you came up with, like, we should recognize the people that's already been working in our communities as opposed to a this coming in brand new, trying to stop, start something in somebody else's community.
Right.
Involve another people.
And you did, you did a really good job of building the relationships and those partnerships across the city of Pittsburgh, really across Allegheny County and beyond, because you had people from all over. And I know you flung people in to be a part of the Juneteenth and the parade. So I think, you know, first it was the idea of let's engage other people, because there were a lot of people doing things in Pittsburgh at the time.
Correct.
And you want, you wanted to make sure that they felt a part of this and not as if they were forgotten. Something new was coming in and all their work was forgotten. So thank you for acknowledging them too and keeping them involved.
So that was our first event, and that started at Stage Eight E. Our biggest mistake for that event is we tried to make that a paid event, when in actuality it needed to be a free event. So then we moved our second event down to.
District District.
The District District, okay, John Chapman. And what did we have to do to go, to have this event down at the District District?
Well, then you would need a city special event permit, which the process was new to you and to me. I just started in 2014 in April. So your event was actually one of, one of the first that I worked on.
Okay.
So I helped you coordinate all the city services you needed, navigate that process. And at the urging of Mayor Paduto, some of the staff members out there, to, you know, keep the cost at a minimum for you.
Yeah, I remember Latrinda.
Latrinda, right.
Working for Mayor Paduto at this time, because at that time he had became the mayor of Pittsburgh.
So you, as a community, as a community event, you were eligible for some benefits.
Right.
That did cut the costs for you.
And helped us. So that was our second event over at the District District, and actually we did that event in September. And then we, in 2015, we actually moved to Downmarket Square. And that was our first event at Downmarket Square. Downmarket Square, we had, I think, the county executive participated in our event Downmarket Square. You came down, you came and did a event for us, you did a proclamation service for Market Square. Again, you approved our permits to allow us to have the festival. We fought a little bit with the Market Square community, but we still were able to put it together.
We still had it, yeah.
Yeah, we still had it down Market Square.
And I remember the conversations. And let's be right upfront about it.
Yeah.
There were events down there that happened where people were drinking in Market Square for years.
Right.
We were having an event that recognized a historical part of American history. It also was a cultural event, and people were quite upset because there was food being sold.
There was food, yeah, exactly.
So, yeah, there was not only a proclamation that was done this time by the city, but also one that was done by Allegheny County. And the reach now was getting further. The word was getting out. People were coming in from not only around Western Pennsylvania, but from out of state. And now this is starting to grow. And for a lot of people who'd never heard of Juneteenth, now it was starting to become known in Pittsburgh and beyond.
Correct. In 2015, that's when I, when you moved to Market Square, right? And that, that location, that Market Square location wasn't just a, wasn't chosen just because of the central downtown location.
Correct.
It had historical significance.
Right.
The Oyster House Bar, like everyone in the city established in, I think, 1870?
I'm not sure.
Prior to the Oyster House, it was owned by John Peck, right?
Right. But not that particular location.
That's right.
So John Peck's location was.
It was on Third Avenue, that's correct, but it's still the general Market Square.
And then we, we found out about that because he started his first oyster house in 1838.
That's correct.
And he did a newspaper clipping promotion.
Right, that's how we found out. So we learned all this history in the process of reviewing and, well, first of all, talking to you about the event.
You're both history buffs.
And Gloria from.
Well, we know he is.
And then you, you mentioned earlier about how this is the first time you heard about Martin Delane.
Right.
And we found out that Martin Delane had his print office on Third Avenue.
Right.
So that's why Market Square was selected.
Big Daddy Richards. Big Daddy Richards was on Third Avenue also.
Correct.
He had a bar on.
Market and Stanways. On Market and Stanway, right, on Third and Stanway.
Third and Stanway.
His son had the bar, and he had where the PBG Glass Building, PBG Paint Building is, that's where his location was.
He was one of the richest men in Allegheny County.
Right.
And was an original signature on the Allegheny County Charter.
In 1788.
Yeah.
1788, he signed.
We found this fascinating.
Yes. So one of the reasons that we selected that location. Then we moved to 2016 and we started the first parade. So tell us about the parade, if you can remember. So we started the first parade because we had found out that in 1870, black people had did a parade here, a voting rights parade.
Jubilee of Fremantle.
The Jubilee of Fremantle Parade. Do you recall that? They went from downtown, up to the Lower Hill District, back downtown, to the North Side, and back over to Market Square. And we found out about that parade, we decided we wanted to try to bring that back to the community. And what were some of the things that we had to do, John, with the permits?
You know, same, same as before B, but, you know, something a little more difficult, because your event was growing, it was bigger.
Yes.
You had, you had some hoops to jump through, but we, you know, I think we did our best to accommodate it.
In this, in this time, I think the mayor, he ended up, we had to have a parade permit as opposed to just having the festival permit, which involved some other activities.
Yeah, so your parade started in the Hill District at Freedom Corner.
Right.
At St. Benedict More Church. Go down Center Avenue.
Down Center, I think I had you read the route. We did a video.
Well, Guy Costa and I up in your office.
Yeah, up in your office, you allowed us.
In the Ikea room, we did a video.
Yeah. And then we moved from there to 2017, in 2018.
You went down Fifth Avenue.
And I, I do want to say that through those times, we had, you had different chiefs of staff, you had Kevin Ackland, who was part of things and helped.
Oh, most definitely, yeah.
You had Dan Gilman, you had Guy Costa as the.
Operations, Chief Operations.
So you had different people in there helping throughout this. I don't want to, when we say we do things, usually if I was helping, I was usually contacting somebody in his office.
Exactly. And.
Public Safety Director History.
Grant Gitlin.
Grant Gitlin.
Grant Gitlin, yeah.
He was, he was phenomenal, helping us get tables and chairs. So some of the things that you guys had to do is you, you invited free tables, chairs, and the stage, all that type of stuff that we had, that we couldn't afford to pay for. So that's one of the things that you guys gave us and helped them assist them with these festivals.
But we're not going to let anyone know that.
Because one of the things that people tend to believe is that, I don't know why they believe it, but they think that last year was our first event, maybe 2021 was our first event. And they don't, because Juneteenth is, since it became a federal holiday, it's been introduced to a wide range of people. And they just seen the recent stuff, they don't know that we had this process in the beginning, that we had to go through to create this.
Every year you'd have to go through a long process.
Yep.
And you, you held it, you stayed strong. And one of the things I have to say about B is you keep great notes and great emails.
And you write long emails.
You write long emails, and you keep a chain of emails, so we knew what was going on through the whole thing, who you talked to, what you did, what they promised you, you know, what the obstacle was.
No, but it was perseverance.
Yeah, it really was.
I mean, if, you know, ninety percent of other people had to face the obstacles, they would've either taken it somewhere else or just said.
It's too much.
Too much, yep.
So we'll jump up to 2019. 2019, we started our Soul Food Festival. And you guys issued us proclamations, I think one of the proclamations is there from the City of Pittsburgh for the Soul Food Festival from Mayor Paduto. And that's when we start recognizing the people that we just mentioned about having the food service industry or businesses on Third Avenue. And who were some of the people, mayor? That you recognize?
Yep, we, well, on this one, we I'm trying to find who it was that we recognized.
It might be on this one, because you might have to, you might have to, because we did some other stuff I'm about to bring it up to.
Jazz greats Ahmaud Jamal.
Oh, no, that wasn't, that was, that's the music festival. I'll get to that one, let me see that again.
There we go, there we go. There's three, no, it's, it's the last one.
It's the last one. Because I had him doing a lot of stuff.
So this was the one when we recognized Big Daddy Richards, who beginning in the late 1700s operated the first African-American slaughterhouse and butchery on Market Street, earning an estimated $200,000 selling meat for the troops during the American Revolution. Charles Richard, Benjamin's son, proprietor of Pittsburgh's first African-American restaurant in, in near Market Square called The Negro. And John Pulpres and his brother Benjamin Pulpres, who owned and operated the first African-American fish stalls in present-day Market Square and the Allegheny Market House at 26 First Street. And rare as the Reverend John C. Peck, who in 1838 opened and operated the first African-American ice cream parlor and the original oyster house on Market Street in downtown. All in that one little area.
All in that one little area, in that one little location. And then the city, you, city council, you issued a proclamation for the Soul Food Festival when you came down there, you recognized it. Because we were having some problems, again, with he just said earlier about some of the food businesses not wanting the food vendors down there and inside of Market Square, but with their help, we were able to get through that. Do you remember that? Because we took that picture.
He keeps asking if I remember. So I, what I remember throughout all of these years is your tenacity and your desire to make sure people knew about Juneteenth, knew about black history, knew about black history in Pittsburgh, and, and supported our local black businesses. That's what I remember.
Most definitely.
And that, and that you've been such an advocate for the community, and that's what I remember the most. And I think it was your passion, and then when you got married, and you bought, you double teamed us. So that's what I mostly remember, all those sorts of things. And I know that the events were always successful and wonderful to be a part of.
They get better every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, because actually, when we could say that, when we first started in 2013, at Stage Eight E, we had maybe seventy-five people. Was not a very big crowd. And every year, it's been progressive. So the next thing that we did in 2000, same year, in 2019, I think we had the proclamation there, right? Was we did the Black Music Festival.
Good thing he's here with a good memory, right?
Yeah. Well, he's, he has a good memory because we have the proclamation. And then, then he issued the proclamation for, was that Ahmaud Jamal, was that 2019?
Yep. There were several.
There were several in 2019. We did a lot of stuff, we started, started expanding.
It's quite a bit. Who did we celebrate? We celebrated, I know that we celebrated Ahmaud Jamal, Mary Lou Williams, and Billy Strayhorn.
So that was actually the beginning of our first black music festival here in the City of Pittsburgh. 2019, when we recognized, I think that we were, we had went down, we were down at Point then, John?
Yeah, special recognition of Sean Jones as well.
Yeah, special recognition of Sean Jones.
Yeah, Black Music Festival was directly to Point, right?
Yeah, so how did we end up getting to the point, John Chapman?
That was a story, because that was when we had to bring in the state.
Yes.
Yes, exactly. So, so with a lot of, a lot of coordination with the state, Department of Conservation and.
Natural Resources.
You, in 2017, moved the festival to Point State Park. And it was, you know, for a few more hoops to jump through.
Few more hoops to jump through.
But again, with the mayor's office's support.
Right.
You were able to.
And actually, we, actually, we had to go down and have a meeting.
Several meetings.
Yeah.
2017, so I had a baby in May of 2017. I was on maternity leave. After Tammy took her six weeks, and I took my six weeks. I got a call from Gloria, saying the guy wants me to go to this meeting. So Preston, what was he, he was four months or something?
Three or four months old.
Had the meeting with me, so he was the youngest board member of the Black Music Festival.
He's one of my first board members of the Black Music Festival.
And Gloria you're referring to is Gloria Ferruzza.
Gloria Ferruzza, right.
Correct. Yeah, so we went down there, we had a meeting with them, and actually, they were trying to tell me, well, why don't you move this festival to the North Side?
Anywhere but Point State Park.
Anywhere but Point State Park.
Yep, and it went all the way up to the secretary.
To the secretary.
And it was the secretary who told her office, make this happen.
Correct, you're absolutely right, you're absolutely right.
But the thing is, subsequent years, you almost went through the same thing. And it almost rose to that level again.
Yes, but the secretary, actually, when I ended up speaking to the secretary, they were like elated to have something like this inside of Point State Park, because they didn't have any African-American events throughout the state of Pennsylvania. And they wanted to tell the governor that, hey, we got our first Juneteenth celebration, our first black music festival in Pittsburgh at Point State Park.
At a state park.
At a state park, yes, right. That was phenomenal. So then we moved on to 2020, and COVID hit us. In 2020, they conned up, the mayor and Teresa Cale Smith conned up together to make a determination that they were going to make Juneteenth a city holiday. And they tricked me when I got up there for our festival event up here at St. Benedict More. Do you remember telling me, hey, I think the mayor's going to come up here and he's going to speak at the event?
That was at the church.
At the church.
I think the mayor could tell the story.
Yeah, he could tell us.
I remember you cried.
Oh, yeah.
Well, because it was, because all the hard work and all the time.
All the, yeah, from 2012.
From 2012, one up.
Eight years that he had put into it.
Yes. And your office did too. And so just to see it all, just to see it all come together.
But, I mean, were you surprised when we just declared it to be an official city holiday?
No, we talked.
Okay, I didn't remember if we caught you off guard or because I, I just remember that you were emotional.
She cried.
Yeah.
Because it finally happened.
And what, what we did is, is we had you there, and we didn't tell you.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But from the work and.
So I didn't know that, I didn't know you didn't know.
No.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know that too. We, we were having a black history event of voting rights forum.
Yeah, I remember.
Where we were talking about the Thirteenth Amendment and Fifteenth Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendment. And that's what the event was for, we were having the event for voting rights. And then he came up to speak about voting rights, and then also made the announcement. But I'll let you tell your story.
And, yeah, and what we announced was that, and this was before the federal government even made their announcement.
Correct.
And before the state made its announcement.
Correct.
And I don't even know if Philadelphia had made.
So we became the first city in the country to make Juneteenth a holiday.
The first city in the country.
First city in the country when you made Juneteenth a holiday.
And what that meant was city employees received the day off. It became an official holiday, recognized throughout city government. And Juneteenth was officially recognized, which I believe started the process, not only for other cities, but for our nation.
Yes, most definitely. It was a powerful moment, because actually, I made it a powerful moment, because I mailed to everybody. So they have an organization called the National Juneteenth Organization, and they, which is across the country in forty-eight other states. And when we made Juneteenth a city holiday, through the announcement, we didn't, because you didn't do it until 2021. But when you made the announcement, we were able to send that to all the other cities across the country. And they end up pressuring all of their cities to ask on with Pittsburgh just there, by making it, to make it a city holiday.
That's awesome. I never knew that.
Because it started the ballroom.
I'm proud of all of us.
Yeah, then Philadelphia made it a holiday. Then the government made it a holiday.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then Johnny Come Lately, the federal government made it a holiday.
But at least they did it.
Oh, most definitely. So it's such a big thing now. So in 2020, in 2020, we couldn't have Juneteenth because of COVID. And 2021, we were still in COVID. But we were initially going to have the Juneteenth celebration in Mellon Park. And then you, again, your staff contacted the people in Harrisburg to see if we could move Juneteenth down to the Black Music Fest, excuse me, the Juneteenth and the Black Music Fest at Mellon Park. See if we could have like a week-long event down at the Point. And so through that, in 2021.
2021.
Yeah, 2020, because what ended up happening is, and this is what I'm going to tell you why it became such a phenomenal thing, is because we were still in COVID in 2020. Going into 2021, I just mentioned all those other forty-some organizations, they all said, we're not going to do Juneteenth this year because of COVID. And I was of the mass, said, we're going to do Juneteenth, let COVID be dead. So we persisted to plan for Juneteenth. And all the other organizations, no one planned to do a Juneteenth celebration. I think it was the end of May, Pennsylvania started lifting some of its restrictions on COVID. Then in maybe two or three weeks from, from the festival, the federal government made Juneteenth a holiday. We opened up our celebration, we had over a hundred thousand people coming from all across the country, because nobody else had planned to do a Juneteenth celebration. So it was the biggest Juneteenth celebration of black music festival across the country in 2021, and we were so happy at that.
And there were new partnerships too that year, I believe, did you not use the stage from the Pittsburgh Ballet Theater?
Yeah, Pittsburgh Ballet Theater.
That was at Flagstaff for two, two or three weeks.
And what was it, what was the chief operator?
Kenzie Casey.
Kenzie Casey.
Yeah.
She was phenomenal, she helped me so much.
Yep.
And orchestrating stuff and getting all types of.
We moved that to Point State Park for you.
Yeah, they, they moved it to Point State Park.
And so after that event, they, after the three-week stand at Flagstaff Ballet Theater, that same stage was moved to Point State Park for your events.
Yeah, and everybody think we had a million dollars because of that stage.
That stage was awesome.
It was an awesome stage, it was free, free to you.
Yeah, it was free to us.
And it was an awesome partnership with the Ballet Theater.
Most definitely. And then it was just a phenomenal thing, and so it got us national attention in Pittsburgh about the Juneteenth celebration. And that's when we start partnering with Visit Pittsburgh and other organizations to try to do an economic impact within the community. So since I'm talking about economic impact, I'll go to the, the thing we mentioned about trying to do something for the black businesses in the community. I think I woke you up at one o'clock in the morning, or three o'clock in the morning, something I sent you.
Probably didn't wake me up.
I sent you an email like two or three o'clock in the morning, I remember that, because I dreamt this. And I, and I titled the email, I had a dream.
Right.
Oh, I do remember that email.
So I dreamt it, and I said, oh, well, let me contact the mayor of our, maybe doing something to help the, the small black businesses in, in our community.
I have the email right here.
And what did he say in the email, Johnny responded back to the email?
Also, so the mayor kicked it back to his staff, and he said, let's do this. And I think Henry Horn Pyatt picked up the reins and started working with B.
But the URA jumped in. The URA jumped in and said, oh, no, this is our, what is the avenues of hope? They put it under that, that project.
Right.
The avenues of hope.
With.
So that was our first opportunity to really start trying to do something for the small black business.
This email is very long, but.
So Claire and Healy from the URA was helping with this.
Yeah. What was it, what was the female?
Claire and Healy.
Claire and Healy.
No, it was a, it was a lady. It was a lady.
Diamante?
Diamante.
Oh, Diamante, right.
Ebony.
Diamante oversaw the avenues of hope. She has moved on to becoming the executive director of a nonprofit.
Oh, okay.
So she left the URA back in March.
Okay.
She earned her PhD about two years ago.
Oh, fantastic.
Yep.
Fantastic. Yeah, so we started.
Sure thing was more or less a farmer's market, but not, not with produce.
Yeah, but not with produce.
It was, it wasn't, it wasn't a, it was like a series of events.
Yeah, a series of events, we wanted to try to do a series of events based on what we were doing.
Every other week or something.
At the festivals downtown. And it started the boom of our economic development within the community. And we can actually say this year, we had over a hundred and fifty vendors during the Juneteenth, the Soul Food Festival, the Black Music Festival. And it was just phenomenal in the recent.
This year is twenty-two.
This year is twenty-twenty-two. But starting from that, just that dream and that idea, and me sending it to Mayor Paduto, him saying, okay, let's get on board with this to the staff, and making it transfer, coming into reality.
Yep. So the idea with the avenues of hope, we have seven different neighborhoods that have business districts where a majority of the land is owned by the city or the URA, and the storefronts are empty. And we want to match entrepreneurs.
and the storefronts are empty. And we wanna match entrepreneurs with the storefronts and start to bring back the neighborhood business district. And we believe that if we can bring back the neighborhood business districts, people will then wanna live in these neighborhoods as well. And if you start to pump the engine, then other businesses will move in.
Right.
And this is exactly what they did in Allentown. And with the Hilltop community started to prime, and now you see Allentown and the other businesses that are moving. And and the, we took office in nineteen, or in twenty fourteen, that was a very, very different community in Allentown than it is today. And if we could look at that organization and learn from their success in seven different communities and give opportunity to entrepreneurs, uh, it could be very successful. On the other hand, we could just have empty vacant storefronts.
Right.
That drag the neighborhood down.
Correct. And I think you're doing something like that over here in your district council.
Chartiers.
Oh, yeah, the avenues of hope on Chartiers, Hall of Chartiers Avenue.
Right.
And we, I think, pretty soon, we should be hearing the store, the first stores opening.
Good.
In Chartiers City, which is the only probably Black neighborhood we have in our district.
Oh, wow.
And and there's millions that was been set aside at the U R A to help those businesses. So ideally, it will be rent-free for the first couple of years so that you don't have to worry about that as you're getting your business started.
Oh.
It's it's.
Is that program still going on?
I'm hopeful.
Avenue's Hope is still going on, although I don't know if the food is still, you know, rent-free, but it's, you know, the program is still going on. And people are starting to take advantage of it.
Yeah, and you know, seven different neighborhoods. Just have to have it. My grandma's parents came over from Italy and they would go down to the strip every day from Homewood with the horse and get produce and stand at the corner of Race and Homewood and sell produce until they saved enough money to go inside.
Okay.
And then they had a little grocery store in Homewood. And my grandma's brother worked there and then he opened the Texaco Station on Frankstown.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, but it was because of that opportunity.
Right.
That same opportunity should be available to everyone today.
Right. You gotta sum the story like that too.
Right?
With your family.
My family.
Which one?
Well, my family. My family's a little bit different. They um moved, my mom and dad met, two sisters, married two brothers. And they moved to um the Hill District on Wiley Avenue. And then when they built the arena, they were displaced. They moved to Fifth Avenue. And they had a store up in on the hill. And then when they moved to Fifth, they opened a bar down on on Fifth Avenue. Uh, later was known as Kenny's Place, but for a long time, it was next to A C D Season, that's the boat office. And they had that bar for about fifty years.
So they own Kenny's Place? It was called Kenny's Place after that?
Now it's called Kenny's Place, yeah. Or would have been called Kenny's Place.
Oh, wow.
It's closed today too. Kenny's is closed too, so. But um, people would, most recently would notice Kenny's Place. But uh, for fifty years, it was there. It was our family's bar. And we lived, moved on to Fifth and Robinson, where my mother lived up until uh three years ago. At ninety-eight, she moved because um there were so many issues with, I hate to say it, traffic. We were driving and the busing and uh the state, the state could change the road a little bit. So anyway, she she had to move because they couldn't get their vehicles, you know, to stay part of the house. And um, but she stayed there until she was ninety-eight. Now she's a hundred and one.
Oh, wow.
Twenty twenty-two, she's a hundred and one.
Oh, fantastic.
Yeah, yeah.
And John, your family, a similar story? My grandmother, when she came here from Germany, opened a bakery on Fifth Avenue. Eighteen uh eighteen forty, no, I'm sorry, seventeen forty-one, Fifth Avenue. Across from Fifth Avenue High School.
Oh, okay.
So she and her sister and brother owned the bakery and met my grandfather, who lived at seventeen forty-seven Fifth Avenue. Um, and you know, got married. And my dad was born when they owned that bakery.
So his family knew my family. Or your family knew my family. We knew each other.
Oh, okay. Yeah. And then they, you know, after she had my dad, you know, they sold the bakery. She became a housewife.
So my family is kinda similar to uh Mayor Perdugo's story. My grandfather came up here. He started the church up on the Hill District. In the wintertime, they sold coal. And in the summertime, they sold ice. And that's how they made uh their money living in the city. My grandmother was kinda different. She came up from the south. She started Speakeasy. So my, her daughter, or her son, met my my mother, who was a church girl, and they got together. So and then here I am today.
Wow.
So it's all a similar type of migration type of story up to the city of Pittsburgh.
When you said ice, you reminded me that we used to have an ice box that, you know, we used to.
Yeah, so they, yeah, they used to sell ice in the summer and cold in the winter, you know, with our horses.
But I still remember the milkman and all that stuff.
Yeah, my family's been in Upton or the Hill District, I think, since uh, you know, nineteen hundred.
Yeah.
Oh, wow, okay. All right, well, that's about it. We appreciate y'all taking the time to do this, to speak about this, these events that we've created and helped with your help and participation. You keep that jump.
I'm gonna keep this.
You might write a book sometime too. You got a break?
Thank you.
So what we're doing is like, we're in a, you and like.
We can get a cup of coffee. I'm gonna uh.